I called to order a special call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council for 5:00 PM today, Wednesday, the 10th of June, 2020. And city clerk, Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody? You have to unmute. Mr. Moody?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
I'm here.
Mayor.
Here.
Thank you.
In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus, his executive order number 51 that he signed on March the 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency, which was ratified by the Portsmouth City Council earlier this year, and due to the fact that the COVID-19 pandemic is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, this is a special call meeting that's being held virtually. This is a special call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council that's being held by a video conference on the 10th day of June, 2020, without a quorum present in the city council chamber. We're doing this in order to continue to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus. Each city council member is participating from their home or some other remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. And we have a quorum. And we call this meeting to discuss the Confederate monument that is located technically on Court Street but in the intersection of Court and High. Colleagues, I sent you an email that I hope you got and had access prior to the meeting. It had two attachments. It had a PDF copy of the resolution that City Council adopted on the 10th of October, 2017, in which council expressed its intent to move the monument once it was clearly legal that we could do so. And the second was the newly enacted Chapter 1101, which is really the engrossment, the enactment of House Bill 1537, which changes Section 15.2-1812 of the state code that addresses war memorials such as the one here in Portsmouth. With that, Mr. City Attorney, is it correct to say that the resolution that City Council adopted in October 10, 2017 is still valid?
That's correct.
Okay. Could you now address the provisions of the newly enacted Chapter 1101 of the Acts of the General Assembly 2020? Tell us what the process is. Not being lawyers, we do understand that a public hearing is required, that there are certain advertisement requirements. What is the earliest date that we can put that advertisement into a local paper and hold a public hearing, among other things?
Mayor, before that, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Since that resolution of 2017, a new council has been seated, and one council can't bind another council to anything. So, excuse me, I think it's incumbent upon the present council to come to a consensus on this position of moving the monument.
No.
I disagree with your first premise that one council can't bind the future of another council. From that premise, a council could revoke this resolution. I think one outstanding question that the city attorney must address is, does the change in the state code require us to hold another vote at the end of the public hearing? So, but generally, it's accepted, Bill, that a resolution stays in effect until it's revoked. And a future council can revoke, can change the city code, can make amendments, change the charter. But there is a process. It stands until it's changed.
And at the appropriate time, I also want to speak to the vandalism that's been occurring. Okay. At the appropriate time, we'll be discussing tonight.
Let's address the legal questions before us. Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Let me try to give you an oversight with regard to the legislation 15.2-1812, which is a change in Virginia law, which does permit effective July 1 for a locality to remove, relocate, contextualize, or cover a monument or memorial on public property. Of course, as you all know, that is a change from the legislation as it exists today and has been prior to. One of the things I want to make a specific point in addressing some of these issues from a timeline standpoint. And I did provide you all a timeline for action. First and foremost, if council is inclined to have a referendum, that decision and that process must occur prior to any other process for relocating a monument. So, I want to make sure that was clear because there was a little discussion about referendums yesterday. So, if you all will take a look, and I'm not going to read each and every section, but if you all will look at, I believe it's Section C of 15.2-1812, it says a locality made prior to initiating the provisions of subsection 2, which is the process for public hearing and a decision to relocate a monument. But prior to initiating the provisions of subsection 2, a petition to the court, Circuit Court having jurisdiction over locality for an advisory referendum can be held on the question of whether or not to remove, relocate, contextualize, or cover any monument located on the locality's public property. So, that is the first point. Once City Council makes that determination that it does want to continue and go forward, there is a process. There must be a public notice filed for 30 days prior to a public hearing. Again, the issue will always be whether or not to remove, relocate, contextualize, or cover the monument. Public notice must be issued 30 days in advance. After the 30-day notice, you can have the public hearing. Subsequent to the public hearing, City Council can make a determination as to how it wants to treat that monument. If it decides it wants to relocate, remove, contextualize, or cover the monument, you must then have an opportunity, a 30-day period of time through which others can offer to take the monument. And that can be an offer from a museum, historical society, government, or military battlefield. After you have left that opportunity for offers, after that 30-day period passes, thereafter, the City Council can determine what it in fact wants to do with the monument, regardless of any offers or suggestions it gets with regard to moving it to some other facility or putting it into care of a museum, another government, a battlefield, or historical society. So, that is the general timeline that council asks in terms of what's the timeframe to act, in terms of when's an appropriate date to start this process that is a function of the 30 days and the newspaper notice. Any questions at this point?
Yes, I do. Okay, I think the mayor is muted.
You're unmuted, Mayor.
Thank you for telling me. I recognize myself. What is the earliest date that we can start the 30-day clock? Can it be started in the month of June even though the law's not in effect, or can we, do we have to wait till July 1?
Mayor, the provision simply says the notice must be 30 days in advance. When we look at the current law and compare it to other legislation proffered in that same General Assembly session, the General Assembly has, even in the context of the Casino Bill, discussed the scheduling of particular events in our casino process. And in the absence of precluding some scheduling in advance, it's my opinion that we could do the notice now and have it as long as we can have the 30 days, and the effective action would fall post-July 1.
All right. While I've got the floor, are we required to do two votes, two more votes, one at the end of the public hearing and then one at the end of the 30 days after the public hearing?
You must determine what you in fact want to do with the property. That's at the end of the 30-day and at the end of the hearing.
Okay.
You have another decision point 30 days following how you wish to treat it because the second 30-day will allow you to receive offers, perhaps to send it somewhere else. And so, you can reaffirm your initial decision, or you can decide you want to, you know, hand it off to someone else if that offer comes and that's something you want to do. So, there are two more decision points.
Yeah. So, yes. So, the statute, the new law builds in two points where councils got to vote at least two more times.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from other members of council?
Yes, I have a question.
Shannon?
And then me.
Well, if I could defer to Vice Mayor Lucas Burke had the question on the floor before I asked. So, she had a question on the floor.
Yes.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shannon. I just want to be clear with Attorney Ashby. So, the 2017 resolution that we did on my sister's birthday, October 17, 2017, is that null and void because that gave us the authority to proceed with removing the monument? And then the second part of my question is, so we can't do anything to add a cover or talk, which is what I proposed last night, so that the vandalism that occurred today wouldn't occur. But now that that is all blighted, I don't know if anybody has seen it, but it's a sight to see now. But that could have been prevented if you had had a covering. So, you're saying that we can't do anything first until we take another vote, and then we have a public hearing, and then 30 days after the public hearing, we will be able to take action whether to cover, remove, relocate, or any other action?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and Vice Mayor, on this particular point, it has been a discussion over the days. If you all will recall back to 2017, you may recall that Charlottesville did in fact put a talk around its statue for a period of time. They were taken to court, and for a period of time, they were told they had to remove that talk. It is precisely because of that action why this legislation talks about even covering the monument and requiring a process in order to cover it. So, although I agree, there are some, there would have been some suggestion that that might have been a better alternative to protect the monument. I believe lawfully, we would have had an issue if we had tried to cover. That's the part of the issue today, is that there is a process now to cover it.
Lisa asked too, is the current resolution null and void? It's not null and void, it's just been superseded by a new law. Is that correct? Is that a good way to say it?
Correct. The actions you took were not in contemplation of the law as it exists. And so, to be under the current law, you did not have those requirements, you did not have a public hearing requirement, you weren't acting in support of existing legislation. It's not that it doesn't count, it's just it doesn't, it won't necessarily apply. And as you all know, we got to dot the i's and cross the t's with this process going forward.
Okay.
In other words, had the General Assembly not put the requirement in for a public hearing, and the other milestone, we could move it?
We could.
Okay. Shannon, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question.
Lisa, is that all yours, Lisa?
Yeah, that was it. So, I mean, I guess, so after the, after the public hearing, then we would take another vote to say if we wanted to move it, relocate it. And then we would also take a second vote to say if we wanted to go to referendum or if our action was dispassed.
I think the referendum, we get to decide that now. And so, let's park that question and make sure we have our understanding amongst all of us of what the law, the new law says. And then we'll come to the referendum question.
Okay.
Okay. So, I have a question. So, the information that Attorney Ashby sent over to us that I've reviewed regarding ownership, the events that occurred today, I need our attorney to tell all of us, do we own this property? Does the city own this property, sir?
Okay. He heard you, Solomon?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, I provided you a sheet titled Determination of Ownership of the Confederate Monument. Within that document are the claims made when the city had its prior action, City of Portsmouth versus Stonewall Camp, Number 380, Sons of the Confederate Veterans. Those are the assertions made at that time, and the ones that you see in front of you are the vast majority of the facts recited by the court at the conclusion of that case. Now, let me be accurate. At the conclusion of the case, the judge did not resolve all issues, but he recognized all of those particular points with regard to, namely, the city has previously denied others access or ability to manipulate that monument because we in fact own it. The fact it's listed in the National Historic Register as the City of Portsmouth owning it. The fact that the city has been the procurer of services for the care and treatment of that monument. More so, just to make the point, the judge did close the issue as it relates to Stonewall Camp 380 because they effectively pulled out of the case and said, "We don't own it," in the midst of litigation. So, that is the case. We have always asserted ownership to the property. And when I say always, I give you the timeline. It's not always, but I give you the timeline for that assertion. And that has been the city's position, and that has been the city's stance with regard to the actions it has taken over the last 20, 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have a question for Sadiq, the attorney.
Okay, Bill, you have the floor.
Solomon, does that ownership extend beyond the property? Does that include the monument itself?
Counselor Moody, as you may recall, there has never been a question of the title of the land under the monument. The question raised then was the physical monument. The property title has been checked on both fronts, and the reputations you have in that document are still the same. I mean, all of the facts listed as our ownership, no other trustee or no other person claiming ownership, and the city claiming ownership from the period in time that exists. To my knowledge, nothing has changed from that position.
Thank you.
Other questions of Solomon? None? All right. Let's go back to his briefing about the referendum. What you said, Solomon, was that the Paragraph C allows for the city, the local governing body, to petition the court to set a referendum that would be advisory? Is that correct?
Correct. But that all of those procedures would have to proceed a public hearing and other matters to determine how to address the monument. So, City Council must, in one manner or another, affirm or dispense with the issue of the referendum before it can proceed with the public hearing issue.
All right. Well, let's see if we have a consensus on that. Those that want to proceed per Paragraph B of the new law, which is the public hearing route and the subsequent 30-day route, let's see if we have a consensus on that. And I'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would be in favor of the 30-day public hearing, but not in favor of the referendum.
Okay. I'll go, I'm going to go the way it appears on my screen, so it's not, it's just the way I see people right. Bill, you're next on my screen.
I'm in favor of the referendum.
Okay. Paul? You're muted. Public hearing or referendum? You're muted, sir.
I am not in favor of a referendum. I am in favor of a 30-day public hearing, and then we move forward.
Nate, you're the next person I see.
I'm in favor of the referendum. I think this is equally as important as the Casino Bill. Therefore, I think we should have a referendum to hear from the citizens.
Lizbeth, you're the next person I see.
I would be in favor of the referendum as well.
And I'm the last person. I'm not in favor of a referendum. I'm for a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to change that, please. What I'm looking, let me say this. What I'm looking for is the less confusion that can be involved with this process. And the referendum will possibly add a lot of confusion, a lot of heartache, a lot of heartbreak. So, I'm going to join you and this person with that.
So, you're for the public hearing route, is that right?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Following, I think it comes out that four members of council are for the public hearing route, and three are for the referendum. So, majority rules, we'll go the public hearing route. So, let's consider setting a date. Let's consider setting a date for the public hearing. And again, Solomon, we can set that date at this meeting? That's the question.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, you're required to set the hearing date, but it must have enough 30-day time period in order to properly notice that.
Madam Clerk, what date do you recommend to get, make sure that we have 30 days?
I will go with the second meeting in July, which I believe is July 28.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, question, I guess, question for Solomon is going forward. I know we have to have the 30 days, but since the legislation doesn't go into effect till July 1, should the 30 days start July 1?
Counselor McClark, as I mentioned to the mayor, there has been other General Assembly legislation that restricts the time to start scheduling particular events. And because this legislation doesn't match with that kind of language, I believe you can have the notice in advance, and then as long as the activity occurs within the statute time period.
Thank you.
All right. So, we can, we can set the date. And Deborah, you're recommending the 28th of July?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have a consensus on the 28th? Anybody opposed to the 28th? Let me do it that way. All right. Let's, any other legal questions that?
Yes.
You want to address?
Yes. I have a, I have a legal question.
Okay. Bill?
I want to go back to my earlier question about the vandalism that's taken place. Since we've cleared up the act of the ownership that the monument is a public property, I have witnessed today the monument, the property being vandalized, and our police officers witnessing the vandalism. And in fact, Mr. Glover and Lisa Lucas Burke were also witnesses to the vandalism. And I believe Virginia law 18.2-137 punishes vandalism as a Class 6 felony when the value exceeds $1,000 or higher. And the exact act is punished as a Class 1, Mr. Mayor, when the value is below $1,000. My question is, who gave the order to our police officers to stand down when witnessing vandalism? Was it the city manager?
Okay, let's.
Is the city manager on this call?
Yes. Yes.
Hold on. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, let me give you a bit of a series of events throughout the evening, so everyone is aware of what the issues and what the considerations are and what. Approximately 11:45 last night, there was an issue of a number of individuals coming to the monument. There was a question about what the activity would be. Chief Green and I had a conversation about how do we permit First Amendment expression without escalating an issue for the city or for the police department. The compromise offered at that time was to do, allow things that could be The compromise offered at that time was to do, allow things that could be removed and would not create any kind of permanent issue. Now, subsequent in the morning, there was some difference of opinion, and as I said through all of the email, part of that, I think, was exacerbated by the discussion of ownership of the monument throughout the day. And because of those issues, as you all may have heard, we moved forward with the issue of trespass for certain individuals who were not in the roadway, but on the confines of the monument, which were city property. As I understand, subsequent there too, the action we took, the number and the actions of individuals in police got issued and the resources in terms of how that project moved forward, how the city response became more of a property issue and became a bit of a personnel issue. That's how we got to this afternoon.
Well, Mr. Attorney, I think the law is very clear on vandalism. And I don't think it's up to anybody to look the other way when they're witnessing the destruction of public property in this case. And I think whoever gave the order to the police officers on the scene to stand down, I think that person should commit their resignation. Because what they've done, they've set a precedent that this city is going to look the other way when the law is broken. And earlier this week, we had a similar situation at the Chick-fil-A. The Chick-fil-A lost approximately two days' worth of business. So protesters were allowed to protest on private property. And that shouldn't have been allowed. Once again, the police officers were there. Somebody ordered the police officers not to take action to protect the owners of the property. And that, once again, that sets off a protest. It's this city's responsibility to protect the property from vandalism and to protect it from people who want to, runaway customers from private property. That should never be allowed. So I would like a more thorough report and feedback to the council on how this transpired. We are a city, a state, a nation of laws. Until the law of vandalism is moved from the books, we should not be selective on who it applies to. In my opinion, it applies to me, it applies to everyone. And that wasn't the case today. And I do think having two elected officials who were known to uphold it all, stand there and witness the vandalism, I'm saddened, I was saddened to see that. And they weren't the only ones, there were school board members there as well. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, I would like to make a comment, please.
Mr. Glover, Shannon, you got the floor, go ahead.
First of all, let me say to my colleague, Mr. Moody, I don't need any type of ethics, ethics speak from him. The most important thing we must consider now is, right now, we have a public safety crisis. We must secure the safety of all of the citizens of Portsmouth and ensure that the Confederate Monument is no longer defaced or damaged. I recommend that we move it immediately to a location where it can be protected until the final decision is made to locate it, to Oak Grove Cemetery. It is always interesting when we get feedback from our leaders, such as Mr. Moody, who wants to criticize, condemn, and complain. The reality is, I have been in the leadership role in ensuring that there is safe protection, that the people in our community are heard and listened to, and that their pain is felt as well. Perhaps Mr. Moody isn't interested in the pain of the entire community, but I assure you, sir, that I am. With that said, I am always going to put the best interest of every citizen in the city and the safety of every citizen in the city in the highest regard. And I hope that my colleagues will follow suit. Thank you.
Mr. Glover, you were complicit in the vandalism that was going on this afternoon. You stood there, you could have used, you have the ability to speak very eloquently. You could have bespoke to those committing the vandalism to ask that they discontinue it, that it's a legal process, that we had a 70 vote to follow yesterday evening. And you failed to do that. So you would derelict in your duty, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Moody, for your outlook.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a question.
Wait a minute, Nate, Lisa's asked for the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to also defend my honor because I went out to the group twos to de-escalate the situation. I told them that we have a special call meeting in place tonight at 5:00. I asked them to please give us time to work the process out. The chief of police was there, I spoke with her, I spoke with officers who stood by and watched what was occurring. I mentioned that we had tried to put the talk on, not knowing the information that Attorney Ashby was giving us today. But the actions did occur. And for the record, they were not just Black Lives Matter people, they were public defenders who are attorneys who have privileged information regarding this law as well. And actually, it was more of them than us this time, which is why I thought it was interesting.
Thank you. Nate, you've got the floor?
Yes, sir, thank you. And I, you know, I'd like to speak to Councilman Glover's, I agree with the point that he said he would like to move it to protect it, but the problem being is, is that's where we are now, it's not legal for us to do it for any reason at this point. But, but piggyback on that, what I would like to have you ask for a consensus is, I would like to have a temporary construction fence erected around it, but it's twofold. One thing that comes up, and I'd like the city attorney to speak on this, is, as I watched videos today of individuals that were climbing on the monument, if one of those had fallen off onto that new fence that was there and impaled themselves, seriously injured or killed, I would believe that the city would have the lawsuit filed against us, as the city attorney has asserted that we have ownership for us. So to protect everybody, protesters and everyone, I think we should erect that fence around it and, as Councilman Glover said, protect the monument, but also to protect the people that are participating.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Lisbeth, please.
I, I, I agree that I'm very concerned about the vandalism and, and, you know, there were even children climbing up on there. I saw one little boy who couldn't have been more than 10, 11 years old, he was barely as tall as the fence. And he was up on, by one of the soldier statues and then climbing down and over the fence and, and that is concerning that somebody could get hurt. But I'm also concerned about, I was given to understand that Commonwealth attorney had said she was not interested in prosecuting or pursuing anything to do with the monument. And, and I don't, if that's true, you know, I don't believe that's her decision. I recall in Norfolk a few years ago, before we had the marijuana legislation that passed this past year, that the Commonwealth attorney in Norfolk made a statement that he wasn't going to prosecute anybody for possession of small amounts of marijuana. And the judges came back and said, "You can't selectively enforce the law. The law is the law and you have to do your job, just like we do as judges." And so, you know, if, if, if the vandalism today was allowed, and I understand that that may have been for the protection of, of life and safety, not only for the participants, but for our officers. But, you know, what's to stop somebody from, you know, breaking down city hall front door or whatever else they choose to do? We have to, we have to know that, the public has to know that the city is safe and that you can't do that. That's not allowed. You know, it's against the law. And we're going to prosecute people who vandalize public and private property. You know, we just have to do that, that we are a city of laws.
Well, let me, let me comment. Paul, go ahead.
I'm not interested in the political and personal footballs that are being thrown here. I have one interest, and that's the safety of all the citizens. And removing this object within the confines of the law, that's all I'm interested in. Safety of every citizen involved, no matter where the passion falls. I just want to do this right where no one is injured, not the citizens, the city, or any element involved. That's, that's all I'm on here. And I'm not going to try to politicize anything, I'm going to be plain Jane with this subject. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everybody has spoken except for me, and I'm going to say that I wasn't there this afternoon, I was preparing for this meeting tonight and other meetings. This has been a good conversation, but I think the correct call was made at the scene. Yes, we are a community, a city, a state, a nation of laws. But one of our primary responsibilities is maintaining public safety. And I think maintaining public safety requires wisdom and judgment. And I think the people on the scene made the right decision today. I, this is hearsay to me, it's my understanding that two people were arrested and word came back from the Commonwealth attorney's office that those charges would be dropped. There's no need to escalate force. That piece of rock is not worth another person being hurt, injured, or even killed. And so I commend the de-escalation of the situation by our police department. Yes, vandalism is, is not what we as a society tolerate. If we did, we would make it legal. But the right decision today was made. With, with that, let's get back to...
I totally disagree, Mayor. I totally disagree.
I hear you, Bill.
Laws aren't to be forced selectively.
Bless you. Are you okay?
Bless you, Lisa, you sound like you're having a medical issue there.
Let's get back to the money that we directed the city manager to come back with us, an appropriation ordinance. I recommended appropriation ordinance so it wouldn't put pressure on either the current budget that's only got two more weeks or three more weeks, or the, the future budget. And my concern too, the manager's got the authority to transfer funds up to $100,000. I really don't think that $100,000 is going to be enough to get the preliminary information that we need as it relates to what site improvements need to be done. So with council's consensus, can we boost the direction to the city manager to bring back an appropriation ordinance that's $200,000? She doesn't have to spend it all, but at least she's got the capability of getting the job done. And that includes any surveying that needs to be done, any source analysis of the sites that we have discussed. Can we have agreement on that, $200,000? Anybody opposed to that? All right, so, okay, one last thing. Can we get consensus on putting up a fence around the monument and task the city manager with, with coming up with that solution as it relates to its, its material that it's made out of, its height? How it goes around the monument, as opposed to it, put it that way. I don't hear anybody being opposed to it. I'm not sure that we need to go that far. Racer, no. But we have then no, no objections to that. Any other items that relate to this subject? All right, let's, let's make sure that we have takeaways. Deborah, you're going to put, start working with the paper to advertise a public hearing on this matter for the 28th of July.
Yes, sir, since I get it from legal, yes.
Dr. Pat, you're going to prepare an appropriation ordinance to bring back at our next meeting that appropriates the sum of $200,000 to start this process.
Yes, sir, June 23rd.
And apart from that appropriation, you're going to start the process of putting a fence up around the monument.
I will be looking into, I'll be looking into the matter and talking with our city attorney.
For me? Yeah. When you say look into the matter, it's only a question of the fabric and, and the material?
Yes, is that right, Mr. Ashby? He said yes.
Okay, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your indulgence on allowing your schedules, this wasn't to be altered to have this meeting. I think we got a lot accomplished and we have a path forward. We're staying on the path established last night.
Can I make one statement, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Yeah, as, and I know, I know that they're already working on the fence, but in the meantime, while they're figuring that out, would it be possible to get one of these companies with the temporary fence that could be placed there immediately until the design of something more permanent could be put there?
I'm pinning on it right this hour.
I did not hear anybody of my colleagues disagree with me when I said, "I think this was a good meeting and that we got a lot done and we're staying the course that we set last night."
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you for this at the last minute. I appreciate everybody taking the time. I think we did get a lot covered and we're clear on where we need to proceed.
Okay, with that, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.